This conference will now be recorded.
I'd like to welcome everyone and we have with us tonight Tony Nans, who is here representing Kurt's firm. So, thank you for joining us there.
Happy to be here.
Okay, first item of business is approval of minutes from the executive session and the regular minute from the October 14th, 2025 meetings.
Make a motion with who the minutes from the executive session and the regular reading on October 14th, 2025.
Your motion is second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Announcements, couple of big things coming up this weekend. Trick or treating is Friday night, 31st, from 5:00 to 7:00, followed by the Halloween party at the fire station. We want to thank the OLSO for hosting that at 6:30. And then the benefit on November 1st for the John Urso family or John's benefit from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the fire station. So, please participate in them, those events as you are able. Any other announcements? Any open discussion? Okay, we'll move right into the department head reports. We'll start with the fire department.
Well, I hope you all received the monthly reports that I sent out to you. Just want to make a quick note in the scorecard that we were successful again in the Indiana Department of Natural Resources grant, matching grant that we've applied for. Ever since COVID, it's been almost a year to a year and a half behind what we normally were used to. So, we were finally awarded the 2024 grant. We did apply for the 2025 grant back in January. We'll apply for the 2026 grant in January. We just know that they're over a year in arrears. But we're obviously very honored to continue to get that grant. And I always tell everybody, it's because we have a wonderful state park in our territory, our covered area, that certainly helps us maintain that. We've used that 100% since I've been here for personal protective gear for the firefighters, with new turnout coats, new turnout pants, pelvis gloves, whatever the case may be, that's what we use it 100% for. So, that and I did not want to barge in on the public works meeting the other day, but just to fill you guys in on the building project. Our design from the architect has been sent to the state. We're waiting for the state to send it back with the approval stamp. Once it does, I'll be trying to schedule a meeting with the public works and we can get further direction on moving forward with that project. I think everything else is pretty simple in the, it's the basic reports. And like Vicki said, we got a busy weekend coming up and maybe we can take a breath on something like this.
Unless we have people picking up their auction.
Yeah, unless they have people still stopping in to think of auction stuff. We are gonna have.
It has, this benefit has Ian Barber on the committee. It's, it is being key, it's the full time job.
What is it?
It's a labor, it's a labor of no.
Yep.
Okay, everybody keep John in their prayers.
Any questions for Bob? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will move on to the police department, Scott.
Vicki, we have the annual fire pay. I think it's under.
Yes, I'm sorry, it's there and not under business.
Is there any questions on the, on the November fire day? Because Carol said that she...
I'm okay with the fire pay. I think the email you're referring to is for the 2026.
Oh, okay.
That's not figured out yet, so later in the agenda, we'll have to table that because I don't have the information to prepare the order.
That was the question.
Now, this is the semi-annual.
But the fire pay is good to go, right?
Yes, what you're, what we're talking about right now is.
Okay.
I would entertain a motion for approval of the fire pay.
I'll move that we approve the approval of the November fire pay.
I'll second that.
We have a motion, a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, thank you for catching that, Carol. Now, Scott.
Should've got your, your report on Thursday of last week. If anybody has any questions, I'd gladly entertain them. I did receive the ballistic vests through our federal grant, VVP. I have submitted the receipt and the request for payment. However, I get a recorded message that says really no movement until the government reopens. So, I've submitted it, but I don't know when we'll get our half or roughly our half back. Just kind of a waiting game there. Does anybody see anything that sparks any interest? It's kind of a, if you call it semi-normal month. The protest was pretty much eventless. They did, somebody had a magic marker and they left a little graffiti, but it was easily painted over. So, somebody was bored.
I had a text message wanting to know if the fire department would come down and clean up the cycle up with the fire truck. It was a joke.
I fell for it.
Yeah, Bob fell for it.
I didn't say anything I need to clean it up, but unless Bob's aboard, he's more likely to do it.
I just texted him back, ha, ha, very funny. But Bob, Bob fell for it. He goes, really? What needs cleaned up? I said, Bob. It was a joke.
I think that would be good news at this point. What did the protesters do that they hit a fire truck to wash it down?
It was funny, Bob fell for it.
There was a few dirty words, but I don't know where they came from. But that's about the only thing, dirt, dirt words, so.
Anybody else have any questions?
I do not.
Well, good.
I read it.
I do want to emphasize real quick, if nobody has any questions, that if you look in the IT note, Frontier, since they come through and put in fiber, they are promoting getting away from copper. I've been in contact at least three times in the last couple of months with that company to fix our phone lines because the coppers twisted or rated pairs keep breaking out underground. So, they're promoting bringing fiber into the building and then going analog from their ONT to our phone. So, it will still be an analog system, but that won't require us to do any digital phone buying. But then that will free up all the breakage of the copper lines. It's a pretty old infrastructure, we all know that. And they're not going to replace it, matter of fact, they're going to remove it. So, we will not have copper lines probably in the next five years. So, they're offering this, since they just put fiber in, they'll hook us up for free. I think they'll hook the fire department up for free. So, no construction cost. But there's a potential savings of approximately $800 a month on our phone bill, which is huge. So, I'm in conversation with Frontier and see if we can make that work. So, later on, if you hear that we've converted to fiber, we technically haven't converted to digital line, but they will bring fiber into the building and then they will use their ONTs on site to convert it back to analog again so we can use the equipment that we've still got without having to put a major investment in that. So, on the face, it looks like a great deal. So, I'm going to do some more research and get some hard and fast numbers, but I think we can save some real potential money and go with a more stable, stable environment for our phone calls. So, that's good news.
Hey, any other questions for Scott? Thank you, Scott.
I appreciate it.
We will move on to our town manager report.
Thank you. There were four things that were predominant in the last month for me. And one was I had to do a revision of the facade improvement matching grant program and application in that we found that changes that had been approved by the council back in, what year it was, '22 or '23, had that never really been drifted over to the website. So, we were using an outdated application on the website. So, this is just revising, you know, with the council had already approved. That'll be before the RDC at its next meeting in November. And, you know, they may accept it or may even approve any other changes, who knows? But we had discussed it with RDC, so no surprises expected. Then, besides that, we had closed out the 2024 CCMG indat grant. That was a requirement before we were allowed to apply for the next grant, which we did, which is the 2026 oh-one CCMG grant. So, that one is in their hands and we're waiting results. And then finally, the fourth thing, and it's on the agenda here later tonight, but I was able to complete the town manager role research, the internal review that that was involved with, and then completing it after staff input, making a recommendation to the council, which you have in your hands. It was a, turned out to be a seven-page, you know, document. And the goal for tonight, unless I'm misreading, but what I think it is, is to not to look at the report per se, but to look at what's the process we want to go through now. And that'll, that'll help every, you know, everybody kind of get on the same page, what are we looking at as far as, you know, months, the different steps. And I did outline those in the report, we can go to that later. And then it would also help Kurt and Tony's to be involved in that to know, to get an idea of when it'll be put into their court. And then the schedule will be up to them at that point. And that's all I have on the town manager report.
I have something to add. We'll need to start looking at the 2026 committee appointments for anyone whose term expires December 2025.
And I know Carol and Shannon were working on that already. I saw a draft and it's in my hands to kind of see if I have any two cents worth to that as to what positions are up for reappointment.
Right, typically, we ask if anyone's expiring, if they want, if they'd like to continue on. And if they tell us no, of which I think we have one already that I'm aware of, that RDC that's no longer going to continue. Then it comes back to council for us to start looking into possible replacements. So, whether the committees, because some of the committees obviously don't meet every month, so it may take some phone calls or whatever. And if I need to help with that, just let me know, okay?
Okay, yep.
Anybody have anything else for Steve? Nope?
No.
Okay, all right, thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Any old business? We will move on to new business. The first item on the agenda is our special event application. The Central Noble Schools are hosting Christmas in the Village on December 6th, 2025. And we have Jamie Howard with us. Jamie, you want to tell us a little bit about what you're doing, if you've made any changes?
It'll be a lot like last year. I think it's the same. It will be 3:00 to 5:30. We'll have Santa's workshop at our central office again. Isaac Stoltz, our fire director, is going to do caroling in Pocket Park, working on a kids' activity with, we have a candy land theme. I would think we're gonna do like a candy mining for the kids in Celebration Alley. And then possibly petting zoo again, that seems to be a hit with all of the kiddos. And they have a love of pocket lot. Still working out a few other details and then create to start at 6:00. So, really a lot like last year, it was a good event. And we've had a lot of community support. We've sent some sponsorship requests out and had a big response for that, which shows the community wants the event and we're excited to do it again. I think this is our third year now of the school petting it up for the chamber.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Anybody have any questions?
How much does it cost to host it?
Last year it was around $1,500.
$1,500?
Yeah. And that includes some donations to Santa and the Carolers' preparation. It was helpful last year, decorations and then gifts for the kids. Last year, we gave away a book to every kid that came through to see Santa. And that was about 100 kids.
And does the chamber contribute?
Yes.
Okay, so they share the cost?
Yeah. We just wanted to try to supplement that a little bit more.
Yeah.
To do something great.
It looks, I have the event application here and all of the department heads have signed off on it. So, there must be no concerns on their end, so. Unless anyone has any other questions, I would entertain a motion for approval.
To approve especially the application for Steve and school questioning.
We have a motion, a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you very much, Jamie.
Thanks for all you do for it.
We enjoy it.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
Our next item is approval of the interlocal agreement with Central Noble Community School Corporation pertaining to the school crossing guard.
Yeah, yeah. Kurt had sent the final draft to council for Central Noble back on October 15th. I don't know when their meetings are, but we haven't heard back anything on that. So, right now, the ball's in their court as far as we know.
Hasn't heard back from the Pepper Heart?
Yep, correct. Yep.
Not by any of them.
Right. Yeah, I didn't know if maybe they.
The 15th, he said it?
Yes.
They met on the 13th? And I believe they're meeting again on the 3rd.
Okay.
Could we, could you possibly send an email and ask if it's not going to be on their agenda for the 3rd?
Absolutely.
They only meet once a month unless they have special meetings, so.
Vicki, that's a work session on the 3rd.
Well, they've been having agendas for those.
But they can't vote on anything.
Can you text Amanda?
Vicki?
Well, the last I knew that they didn't really know anything about it. It was being done between the two committees and that.
The 17th.
So, the 17th will be their regular meeting, November 17th.
We just missed the last one.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up, Matt. Yeah, that's a work session, but the regular scheduled meeting is the 17th.
Then that makes sense why we haven't heard anything back.
It does, but.
Yeah, I'll check.
Another month.
I'll check, just make sure that it's on for the 17th.
Okay, thank you, Tony. All right, on to consideration of the vision and dental insurance renewal with Best Life. This was presented to the committee. Carol, do you want to give us a brief rundown of that?
There was no increase for vision and a 7% increase for dental premiums. And it was, I heard from everyone except Corey from the committee and everyone that responded was okay with renewing with Best Life. The town pays 100% of the employees' premium and the employees responsible for 100% of their spouse independent premiums.
So, based on the committee's recommendation, would someone like to make a motion?
I made that we.
Sure.
Sure, you're on the committee, I think so.
I made that we approve the renewal with Best Life for dental and vision. 7% increase on dental and no, no increase for vision.
I'll second that.
We have a motion, a second, all those in favor? Aye, opposed? Okay, on to approval of our salary ordinance number 2025-15. This is to include the stipend for our part-time fire chief. And I think we need to waive the second reading tonight so we can meet the first payroll in November.
Right. Are you ready?
Yeah.
We reviewed it, our office reviewed it, everything was good. I think Carol made the revisions to show that it's only going to be four payrolls instead of originally we did the six, so, yep, everything looked good.
So, we don't have to do the cause and our attorney and all that?
Like a motion. I make a motion that we approve the salary ordinance number 2025-15, the stipend for the part-time fire chief.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
I move that we suspend the second reading tonight.
And move to pass it.
And move to pass it, yeah.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to suspend the second reading and pass the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. Make sure you sign, there's two pages when you do the second reading. Okay, we will move on to item number five, approval of the salary ordinance 2025-17. This is for 2026 employee compensation. We are not completely ready to do this tonight, so we need to table it, correct, Carol?
Yeah, I haven't received anything on the finalized firefighter pay.
Are you working on that?
I submitted it to Kurt.
Oh.
Do you have enough data on that, Tony?
I do, I mean, do we want to talk about it right now?
We can.
Okay. Yeah, I was able to review it.
And that needs tweaking?
Well, a little concerned about the tiers, trying to use tiers to get around it. Really, a stipend is designed to be like a, an annual amount that you get that encompasses kind of everything. I don't want to be concerned with maintenance work. I don't know, when I looked at it, I thought, instead of having volunteer firefighters work on the trucks, let's have those same guys, but have them be part-time maintenance workers. Then you paid an hourly to work on the fire truck. But to be able to try to do tiers for different items as volunteers.
You have this ingestion.
Well, that would be one, as far as maintenance at work goes, have them be part-time employees, paid hourly, so that they're not in their capacity as volunteer firefighters. Because the problem with hourly work as a volunteer firefighter is it, they lose their volunteer status. And I think Kurt's gone over that before. So, that's the big thing that jumped out to me is when you're trying to do different tiers for different number of hours, you really run the risk of it, it looks like a duck, it quacks like a duck. You know, it is a duck. It's still, it's a different way to try to get around hourly pay, but it still looks like hourly pay at the end of the day.
Are you saying the same person can be a part-time employee paid hourly and a volunteer fire department?
As long as they're not doing anything in their capacity as a volunteer firefighter when they're working on a fire truck. If they're, if they're just doing maintenance and you paid hourly doing maintenance work. But if they got a call while they're doing maintenance, they need to go off the clock and then they're a volunteer firefighter and that's covered under their stipend pay of the volunteer firefighter. So, it would create some logistical headaches, you know, like if, I don't know either name, but if Brian is there working on a fire truck and a call comes out and he goes on that call, he went off the clock as soon as the call came in and then he's covered under just his stipend pay as a volunteer firefighter. Does that make sense?
Yep, yep.
We brought on and offered part-time hours to get some manpower during the day when most people are at work so that we would have people to take calls and rather than just having them sit and do nothing, that's how they started these meetings.
If I look a little shocked, I am, because that's exactly the way we've been doing it. Minus, they don't, they don't clock out if a run comes in, but they do not, they are not allowed to get run pay while they were on the clock doing part-time. So, I don't see it as a logistical nightmare to clock them out, give them the run pay, however we determine the run pay. And then when they come back from the run and they go back to maintaining the rigs, then they go back to hourly. That, that, that seems very doable to me.
When we're talking maintenance on fire trucks though, are we, like, I'm thinking mechanic work. Like, if they're washing a truck and that's something that firefighters already do, that wouldn't be something that they could do and receive part-time pay as maintenance.
So, so, you know, in, in all factual, they come in in the morning, they, they make sure all the trucks are operational, they check oil, they're running them. You know, yes, they'll wash them, they'll do inventory, they make sure all the small engines are running. You know, primarily, they're there to get that done and have a crew available for quicker response times.
So, everything you just described kind of just sounds more like volunteer firefighter work to me.
Yeah.
Like, when I, what I was thinking was more like, if you've got somebody that comes in and works on the truck, like, there's a mechanical issue with the vehicle and you've got guys that are mechanically inclined, then they can get paid as maintenance workers hourly while they're working on the truck. But if everything you described is a normal volunteer firefighter job, then that wouldn't be able to be paid hourly.
Not even if it's only 20% of the entire department's personnel. That, that was a discussion that Kurt and I had at the last meeting. You can pay hourly, the way I remember him saying this, you can pay hourly up to 20% of the people and that's including me as one of those people, which gave us a total of 5.6 people. Or, or let's say take, you take me, that, that makes sense, 4, 4.4 people or 4.6 people, so.
Four more.
Four more. It was my understanding that I could pay them hourly to be volunteer firefighters and do whatever they, they need to do during that time.
And it would be just those four, same four people?
Yeah, we would have to limit it at four.
And it would have, you just, it's like, it wouldn't be able to be a rotation of four, it would just be, you pick four guys and.
Four, four, four firefighters total.
At one time, so if one quit, then you could replace that one.
We could replace that one, right, right. But no more than 20%, and I'm just using four because that's the factual number, because I have to play into that effect for that number. So, there were four. We currently have six, so I'd have to make it, you know, I'd have to take two people off of that payroll of being part-time. Are you in agreeance that that's okay?
Yes, then you can have up to 20% of paid firefighters.
Yes.
And so, if they're a paid firefighter, then they can be paid hourly.
That's the way I understood it. And that was the direction I was going. Now.
Was that, was that your idea with the tiers?
Nope, the tiers, the tiers are totally separate.
Okay, okay.
So, you want to get into the tiers?
What? I mean.
The tiers are the type of runs that we pay a stipend for. I don't feel it's, I don't say fair, that's a horrible word. We, we make, a majority of ours are medical calls. And so, instead of paying them hourly to make medical calls, they're going to make a stipend per call. Each firefighter will make a stipend per call. I didn't see that it was equitable means of their work to pay a firefighter a tier level to make a med run as it would be to make a working structure fire. So, that would have a different tier value. And I thought that Kurt had said that was okay to do, but maybe.
I'll have to talk to him about that.
Sure.
I agree with the concept that a medical run is not the same as a structure fire. What I'm not sure about is that legally, you can differentiate between the two, a run and a run, and a run.
Okay.
But I can look into that and get back to you.
Well, and, and that's okay, if you say we just have to put value to it, then we put a value to it.
That's where I lean, but I will confirm that for you.
Yeah, and, and again, I know, I know Kurt's circumstances, that he's had this for two weeks. And I had, we hadn't heard anything back other than, I'll look at it early next week, like last week. And, you know, I haven't heard anything back, so I feel a little ill-prepared to move this ordinance forward because I haven't got the legal advice back.
Yeah, and I'll get back to you.
Yeah, we knew we were going to table it, but this has been good discussion.
Yeah, and, and like I said, I want to just maintain those guys being hourly, but only up to 20% of the firefighters. So, they'll stay at the same hourly rate, I just have to remove two from that to be able from the pool that we have. And then we'll just go to, you say run pay. You know, so every time somebody gets a run, they'll get the same amount of money. I just, I, I said, I just wanted to be equitable that people making a med run and they're back in bed in a half hour, forty-five minutes compared to the people who have got to make a structure fire, same people, you know, that are out there for six, seven hours, or doing it for seven dollars total, or eight dollars total.
I definitely understand the issue there. Yep, although you know, on both, the twenty percent paid hourly and stipend for medical purchase stipend.
Well, thank you.
Are you still looking at doing stipends for officer?
Yeah, I don't want to change, our, our officers are elected by the department, and we pay them a stipend for the, for the added responsibilities that they have. Is that okay?
That should be fine, I mean, as long as you don't have a situation where, I don't know how much they're getting paid, but if they would equal twenty percent of your pay or more, then they're also considered, considered paid within that, who counts with your number?
Okay, correct, we figured that out, and it was about fourteen thousand five hundred, stuff like that, and they're not hitting that.
Even when they get their runs and everything connected in?
Okay.
Okay, we will have that on our next agenda then, and we won't be meeting November eleventh, so the end of November. Which reminds me, we need to discuss, or I forget that point. Do we want all of our department heads then to report the second meeting in November?
They'll have to.
They don't usually do that, but I don't think it's a bad idea. Usually, they just get away with that. Okay.
Before we leave the fire, so just for clarification purposes, the four employees do run, or the four employees cannot make more than twenty percent of your wage, correct? That is a stipulation.
Each person.
Each person, correct, okay.
I thought it was five point six employees, where am I getting that five point six?
That's twenty percent of the total number of firefighters, so that number can fluctuate if Bob recruits twenty people, well, then he can, you know, increase his part, or his part-time help.
And along those lines, he would lose five right away.
Yep.
And you're going to have to get rid of some of those paid right away, you know, keep track of that as well.
Yep, okay, so, that was a clarification thing. My next question is for you, Tony. With Bob having the four people, when is, when is it appropriate where he can add and remove? Is that like on a year basis? So, he has to wait till January first where he declares? How do you add or remove people?
I think at any given time, so, Brian as a name, Brian is a paid employee, he resigns or leaves or whatever, then you can fill that role pretty much immediately, you just can't ever have more than five at a given time.
Okay, so then it's not a dollar amount that is affecting that in a calendar year or fiscal year? Because Brian made fourteen thousand dollars, you know, it's part-time, and then they bring someone else on, and they're eligible to make another fourteen thousand, just as long as it's still not twenty percent of his wage, it doesn't matter if it's in a calendar year or fiscal year?
I don't think so, but I have to check that also, yeah. If you're doing it to rotate guys around so they can make more money, I think you're going to run into trouble. If it looks like shenanigans, you know, that's probably a problem, but as long as the person actually leaves and is no longer with the fire department, and you replace that person, I think that's fine.
Throw another situation at you, what if someone gets a full-time fire position down in Fort Wayne, you know, and so, they've been here working for Bob quite a bit, part-time employee, they get a full-time position, they leave half-year, but they're still going to retain being like volunteered here, but they're going to full-time down there, does that present any problems?
It could, that could, yeah, because then if you got the combination of, depending on how much that person's going to make the rest of the year combined with the person that replaces them, you probably have to pay attention to that for calendar year.
I didn't understand that.
So, if employee X.
Let's just say Brian.
Brian is a paid employee, and then he gets a full-time position down at Fort Wayne, and so, he stays on here as a volunteer, then in that situation, I think you do have to be careful when you replace Brian, so that the total compensation doesn't go over that, over that threshold between the two of them.
So, Brian, so Brian goes to Fort Wayne and says, hey, I don't have time to work part-time, but I still want to stay a firefighter, like volunteer. Sir, yes, I just want to show up, make runs, train, you know, such like that, you know, our compensation training. Okay, yeah, it, it, it's extremely, extremely almost impossible to not to make even what near fourteen thousand and not be working part-time, have a lot of hours.
Yeah, you didn't seem worried about it, which makes me feel a little bit better, but it will be, just be something that you often think about, if that's the situation where.
Yep, we had, we had one employee that we pulled from twenty twenty-four numbers, and he was close, but in twenty twenty-five, he's like only halfway, and here we are, two months to go, so.
Is that something you can keep track of throughout the year?
Yes.
So, I mean, if, for Brian, if Brian, you know, is, is getting close to that fourteen thousand number, you have to tell him that you can't go anywhere.
Correct, correct.
You know, the last six weeks of the year.
You know, I think, I wish you guys could just see, they're not there eight hours a day, five days a week, they're there four hours a day, three or four days a week. You know, then some guys come in in the evening because they've worked during the day, and they show up to projects. Yeah, nobody, nobody's gonna, I shouldn't say nobody's going to get to that twenty percent, we did have a guy come close two years ago, but, you know, not this year. I think they, I think they just think it's, it's a lot of work.
Okay. Anything else on the fire? Okay.
Yeah, I have a question. If somebody is on FMLA, do they get paid?
They're just, isn't that where they're just, they're leaving, it's guaranteed.
Yeah. I think under policies, you can make them use all their paid time off if they've accumulated, but yeah, no, it'd be unpaid for any remainder after that. Some policies don't even require them to use all their paid time off, it just depends on your handbook.
So, the purpose is to keep their position? Okay, Carol, did you understand that we were discussing that second meeting in November, having all department heads report?
Yes, I made a note of that.
Okay. Will you make sure that those three department heads are aware of that so that they don't find out at the last minute?
Or Steve can.
Actually, you know, if there are department head meeting the first of the month, give them a bit of time.
Can I, can I just ask one question, maybe quick for clarity? So, one, one set dollar amount per person per run is, is good?
Yes.
Okay.
Either per run or a stipend, an annual stipend or a per run are both okay, hourly is the problem, and so, anything you've got that looks like hourly is also going to be a problem.
For people coming in to make runs, not the part-time. And I think I can work with that, I just, but, you know, I have a budget now that I kind of have an idea where it all falls into, and.
Stipend good.
Yeah, well, paying per run is not bad either, it's just finding that happy medium that, you know, and I think, I think everybody in this room would understand that paying so much for a med run and paying the same amount for a working structured fire is kicking, kicking the meat ass, you know, but.
Your stipend good, not really bad.
We also know they're not in it for the money.
They are not, they are not, but I feel they need to be compensated as best as they can.
And I think we all feel that way as well.
Well, I, I, I hope you return something to me and we'll work through and have something that I can get to Carol soon.
I will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And a stipend's a stipend, you know what I mean? I don't know if you have criteria, you know, that have to be met to, to get a stipend, but a stipend's a stipend, you know what I mean? You know, like, if you're elected and, and your stipend comes with your elect, your elected position, then that's what it is, it is what it is.
Okay, we are going to move on to update on the proposed changes to the town manager role, and I don't think we're going to get into this real heavy, are we?
And, and, and when, when is Kurt coming back again?
He might be back for the second, for the meeting in November.
Yeah, I, I don't want to get real deep into this until Kurt gets back, because, you know, okay, that, that's, right.
I think Steve was just wanting us to kind of come up with a, a plan on how we're going to move forward in a timeline, maybe.
Right.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful, even in light of, you know, Kurt's situation to be determined, maybe take that into account, and with the holidays and everything, you know, so you could, you could say, well, let's defer to January, or maybe why, maybe you want to come up with, maybe when Kurt's back, at least then come up with a schedule at that point, or, you know, whatever works for, for everybody here. I will, you know, without going into all the details, I do feel that I, I've done a comprehensive effort at looking at all the five sources of the town manager's role, which, you know, I spelled it out in there, where I looked at the IC code, the job description, the written summary based on the hiring committee's report we got in May of twenty-four, and then my first year experience here, which then also included the Tony ordinance role, that spells out the role of the plan administrator and its relation to the, the plan commission, RDC and BZA. So, all of those sources were looked at, and then I felt I adhered to the mandate that was, that I felt was given to me to reinterpret the role, re-envision the role, to meet a couple of objectives, and, and they were just very simply, the first objective was kind of get rid of supervisory oversight and disciplinary authority that instead would revert back to the departments. So, we were going from a centralized sort of management style, if you will, to decentralized, where it's more as being, you know, vested into the, into the departments for those operations. And then, the second objective was with the goal of, of being able to attract a long-term candidate in the, in the new position, because most of the town managers in the past, you know, I guess have been in the role anywhere from maybe two to four years, if that. And so, and the, the departments were kind of tired of that, that, that merry-go-round and wanted something that they would feel, you know, more secure about despite whoever is in the town manager role, or whatever we're going to call it. And so, those are the two objectives, and I think that what I came up with addresses that, and then Carol brought up in her report and her comments, kind of a major counterpoint, which should give, you know, give a good pause to everybody to at least say, you know, well, we get that suggestion as well that Carol has made. So, the two approaches are a little different in, in, in a couple of areas, and we'll get into that as we, I suppose, that when you want to get into it, we'll get into it. But that being said, there's, you've got in your hands the report that, you know, it's long overdue, as you know, I, I lost track about how far behind I was with it, a, a good two months, I'm sure, but I hope you can appreciate that it, it was worth, you know, it really worth the diligence that, that led to, so that, you know, it's a very methodical approach. And, and then, it's a, it's a stepping point for when, you know, for what do you really want to do with it after you really get a chance to get into it? But back to the schedule, just in conclusion, I mean, how do you, how do you, you know, again, maybe we wait till Kurt comes back and say, okay, find out his schedule, and then, you know, then we start, we do, we lay out the council schedule, because once the council is done deciding, here's what you like, here's what you don't like, you know, do the black line addition, there you go, there, there's the finished product, it's put into the attorney's hands for the attorney's input in case there's any grave error made, doubtful though, but if there was, they would weigh in on that, but then, more importantly, they, you know, Kurt and/or Tony has a bunch of steps to take in terms of adopting different changing policies, this and that ordinances, to make it official and to make it official as of, you know, what we envision to be the date of my retirement, early twenty twenty-seven. And so, yeah, so anything you want to get accomplished tonight, fine, you're a step ahead of the game, if not, just wait till, you know, Kurt is back to, or at any point where you'd say, what schedule are we going to abide by here, you just kind of set a schedule. Do you, and I think, and maybe Tony could, could weigh in a bit on this question, I'm, I'm assuming, I'm thinking that all of this discussion has to happen in open session, not in executive session.
Yep, that's correct. Yep, and I, I mean, happy to wait for Kurt, I did get a chance to review everything, so I can weigh in, I can stay quiet, do whatever you guys want me to do, but I did think you did a great job of being thorough, covering a lot of ground with your report.
Thank you, and, and you know, what the department saw, well, they saw this too, but they were given like an eight, eight-page spreadsheet, and that was, you know, super cumbersome, I know, where it, it asked them, or it said, it ranked the duties, the importance, is it high importance, medium or low, in, in my opinion, I ranked it, and then I said, who does it now, and which, either myself or which department does it, who should do it, and then I got the input of different ones, and then from that, I put it into a more readable format. So, there's about three pages of a narrative introduction, just to go over the highlights of what the, what this is all about, and then the final four pages are are really a job description, and I, and I ended up calling the role, the new role, based on the duties that it would be doing, in, in my opinion, would be admin coordinator slash planner, and then its roles really evolve around, I think it's five duties, town council interface, department interface, number three, almost in this order actually, plan commission duties, RDC duties, and finally, BZA duties.
You're still going to have disciplinary, what, what responsibilities?
So, that's interesting, in, in this version, no, so that's something you'll have to tweak.
Yeah, well, you definitely have to tweak that, because you still need a disciplinary arm over the department heads. You are essentially our eyes and ears on a day-to-day thing, so if we have a department head that's coming in here intoxicated every day, who has the authority to write them up? And that lies with you.
I can even do worse than that, I think.
Different scenario.
Oh, okay, sorry, man, I was listening.
But any disciplinary action needs to be documented by you.
Well, and, and in this version, it, the way I wrote it was, it would be documented by the department head and I'd be an assistant role.
What if it's the department head that is acting out of line?
Well, bingo, then, then you, you hit the blind spot here, the weakness of if we went the, the approach that I was in, understanding that, you know, was originally mandated.
Along those lines, that was one of the main things that I pointed out from a legal standpoint, having that centralized person that, that does the firing and discipline keeps things consistent, rather than having one department head that's loosey-goosey and one that's really stirred. When you have that centralized position, it keeps things consistent for the town across the board, which, you know, from a legal standpoint, kind of protects the town from any lawsuits for unfair treatment, you know, somebody being different.
It just rang a bell, if you don't mind, I'm tagging onto this, Tony, I recall when we kind of were looking at that, and remember that the departments, some, you know, were very strong about saying, no, we, we want to report to the council, and that was going to be the new arrangement, that the council was going to be the.
You're, you're missing some of the components here, Steve, so. One of the department heads specifically said that he didn't want to be, have, didn't want the town manager to have the ability to fire them.
Okay, you saw that, yeah.
And that's fine if we want to go that route, what's not fine about it is that when you have to document why an individual is being fired, who's documenting that? And that, that's you, that's the town manager. So, my envision is if we want to vector in the direction to where no department heads are actually being fired by the town manager, but it's actually being decided or recommended by the HR committee, if you will, which is two representatives of the council and some other individuals, that's fine, but we still need a mechanism. That's fine, but we still need a mechanism that documents why they are being terminated. And I think that's more of a legal issue than anything else. So that, back to you being our eyes and ears on a day-to-day basis is you're still the one that should be documenting, write, write-ups, if you will, or whatever the case may be that Scott's been late to work for three days this week, four days, whatever the case is, whatever the offense is, someone has to do that and I, I think it still lies with the town manager.
And it, I'll tell you though, it's going to be a, we're going to be walking a fine line here to achieve what, um, I think was, was the goal where this new role was to, was to be kind of on the, even, even organizationally, everybody made a big deal about the organization chart has to be changed. The town manager is now on the same level line as all the departments. So, you know, th- these are things we're going to have to really kind of talk about pros and cons going forward because, um, it, it's, it may not be as simple. And for instance, let's say, in the way it's written now, the proposal, uh, this town manager, admin coordinator slash planner would be a liaison if the council says, uh, hey, um, Steve, we, we think there's an issue in, in, in the street department. We'd like you to monitor. Well, then at that point, that position would then maybe take on a little bit of a different role. Because prior to that, the position, they're, they're, they're not going to be overseeing day-to-day stuff. I don't do that now. I mean, you know, every, you know what I'm saying? Unless, unless I have reason to, to investigate, which would be either a complaint by the public or by the council, or maybe problems that I'm seeing or that I'm hearing within the organization. You're kind of getting, you're, you're getting a glimpse already of what the, the proposed role would be because I'm kind of operating in that mode. It just happens to be a bit my style, but also a bit of what I perceive that, you know, everybody, council and staff wanted. So I've kind of fit into that mode. But, um, I, I'm just pointing out there, there's, I, I, you know, I'm not a, we're going to put whatever hopefully the council wants, but I am going to try to be frank, forthright to say, hmm, you know, it's, doesn't pass the smell test. Here's, here's where it will work. Here's maybe where it's going to get, it's going to get sticky. And that would just be my opinion, but, uh.
And one of the things to consider along those lines is if there isn't a centralized person, for you guys to be able to have that discussion about, you know, potentially a, an employee misconduct issue, you're going to have to have an executive set session. You're going to have that forty-eight hours notice most likely and then direct somebody to keep an eye on it. Doesn't mean that that's bad. That's just something that you're going to have to consider that, you know, whereas now I think that information is brought to you, um, by one person when, when it's already known, whereas it's kind of, for you guys to be the ones that are in charge of it, you're going to have to, um, either have an executive session or talk about it in a public meeting. It means executive session.
I mean, what, uh, supersedes one or the other, the IC code or a contract that you have with the employee?
So specifically for town manager, the, the code says, here are the duties unless the town council dictates otherwise. So it's, it's contemplated in there that you can have it set up in a way.
I guess, let me rephrase my question. If a department head has a contract with the town and it says that they will not be fired by the town manager, terminated by the town manager, um, but by council decision, what supersedes then? The contract that the department head has or the IC code?
The contract would control. As long as, as long as the IC code allows for contract control, which most of the time it does. So typically, you would cover that. We wouldn't have it put in the contract and it wouldn't have been valid.
Well, this was a contract that you guys didn't do. So this is a prior contract, so.
We probably have to look at it and then to let you know.
True, I, I was just wondering.
We've been experiencing a lot of those things.
Okay. But just, just for our essay, like what supersedes? The individual contract that we have with, with an employee or is it the IC code? So.
Well, if Kurt wrote me.
The contract.
The contract.
Right. If not, I'd have to look at it. But, um, yeah, I think, yeah, that's probably the best thing that I could say is typically the contract would control, but a contract also uh, wouldn't be allowed to violate any kind of federal or state law. So that's a really wishy-washy answer. I apologize, but.
That's okay.
Like I say, if we draft it, we're going to check that beforehand and make sure if you enter into a contract, you can't use.
Right.
You can't force.
Can I, um, piggyback off of his question? Uh, there's a built-in state buffer between town marshal position and the town manager. Does changing the name affect that buffer on discipline?
Name of what?
The position.
Town manager?
In other words, if we went to a, a, this, let's say, call it admin coordinator slash planner with a corresponding job description, maybe the council vests it with more authority than I've had, than I have in here. But so back to Scott then, with the title, right now, there's a divide.
There's a built-in buffer in statute between the town manager position and the town marshal. For discipline.
Right. Well, you have your own discipline statute anyway. So if that was, that was control, uh, they'd still have to, you know, it's more than five days without pay or something. I think you'd have to be pretty. I think you're entitled to whoever it comes from.
So are you asking, would that then go to the council instead of that person?
Yeah, it was my understanding that the, um, town manager cannot be involved in this, any disciplinary procedures of the town marshal office.
That's correct. That is correct.
So I'm asking him if the contract that Zane's talking about, which I'm not contracted, but if that was written into a contract, does that void that IC code?
Good. Good if it's a different titled position. Um, I'm also not sure whether or not the town council can dictate that the town manager could have authority. I mean, unless it's a direct contradiction.
So that's a gray area that by IC code, at least the way I read it, is pretty, pretty black and white. But by what he's designing here, that creates a real blurred line, in my opinion. And then what Zane's asking about, that even blurs it that much more when it comes to disciplinary overs- oversight of the town manager or whatever you call it.
Our department heads do not, this revolving town manager door, our department heads do not want a town manager on a, on a power trip. Okay?
Yeah, we get that, but it's our responsibility to try to not hire one of those. And then if we do hire one of those, to eliminate one of them.
Right.
That's our responsibility.
That's right. I'm, I'm just saying that that's what came out of the last, um,
Input, yeah.
Yeah, that's what came out of the last hiring when we, when.
Oh, when we had all the department heads.
When we had all the department heads involved in the last hiring process, which is how this whole thing came about.
They, they want to continue their day-to-day work.
And, and Steve, for the most part, that's how we've been operating since you've been here.
Right. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, that's what I'm saying. You almost get a picture of what it, uh, will look like.
Is how we've been operating since you've been.
Yeah, 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 because I'm, there's just a few things I can point out once we get into the fine, the brass tacks of.
Right.
What, what I, what's changed in here versus what I'm doing now or or not doing that now is added in here, that kind of thing.
Right.
And Carol would have some input on that as well.
But I'd also tell you that in the years that I've been on the council, that we had a twenty-some-year employee that had a drinking problem that drank every day on the job.
And they were still here for how long?
Twenty-some years. And also.
And why?
Huh?
Why?
And, and that also, um, tested positive and the town manager somehow convinced the council to, um, we have a zero, we had a zero tolerance policy and I think the guy made it another two or three weeks before he filled another breathalyzer.
If somebody would like specifics on that, I could give some input, but I don't think a public meeting is inappropriate for.
But I'm just telling you, these things have happened.
I have one, one other question. I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Hypothetical situation. Always thought, yeah. Get to make them up as I go. I'm an employee. You're my boss. We don't like each other. You end up convincing somebody to let me go other than just, you don't like me. Okay? You're not very good at documentation. So you didn't get very many write-ups or maybe the write-up was made, but it was lost, that whatever. We go to court. I decide that I'm going to do a wrongful termination suit. You don't have any documentation. How's that going for you? Or very limited documentation.
For the most part, most of your employees are at will and so you can get rid of them for any cause, no cause, whatever cause.
Okay.
If it was a situation where that wasn't the case, like a police officer, they're entitled to different, um, processes that you're going to discipline them for more than five days without pay than, than what any of your other employees are entitled to. So I don't think it would come up for the town, um, unlikely. But you do want, kind of goes back to what I said about having a centralized person that's in charge of discipline. You want somebody that's trained to know to document things and have a file folder, uh, so that when it does get time to let somebody go, you've got the support for it if you need it. But for the most part, it shouldn't come into play for most of your employees, I assume. Stay back me up, but are most of them at will?
Yes, other than, I think we just have many contracted positions, so mine, Cory.
Two.
Sure.
And then Bob is, that'd be three.
Tom would be three. Department head.
But I think as the, as people retire, there will be more. As department heads retire, I think there will be more.
Same way where town manager supervisor doesn't get along, who's going to document what? You know, how does, who has authority to document disciplinary action against a department supervisor?
Right now, if you're a town manager.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, definitely by the organizational chart and even within, um, the IC code gives them the higher fire discipline of all of them. You do need some documentation, at least if somebody says, hey, I was recruited there.
Or the, or the department head, whoever have that over there.
Or the supervisor, the town manager, whether it's employee, supervisor, you do need some.
Five departments.
It's always best that documentation, but if they're at will, then you really have to go for anything.
You have to be.
Any reason, no reason.
Now, now whether or not the, the termination powers lie with the town manager as the IC code states, or whether we want to put that in the hands of the HR committee and that they make a recommendation to council and it's ultimately at the council, that's something we can talk about, but.
And like the county, you know how they have, the county council has a liaison for each county department? We talked about that too, remember?
Do you guys not have liaisons, predepartment?
No, but we talked about it.
Okay.
And then, um, we also talked about our next, um, planner or whatever you want to call it, having some kind of HR experience.
Well, this is what you're, it's, I have an HR background.
Yeah, have an HR background.
To get somebody though with, if this would lend itself, the new proposed role more to the planning side, which was also kind of envisioned and, and, and I kind of corroborated it based on my year of experience that that, that is most of the, the duties, you know, that have, are on the planning side of things.
Yeah.
But so it, it'll be actually easier, if you will, to recruit somebody, I think, with the technical planning background. And they'll have all of the provenance, provenance that you would want somebody to have. The ability to deal with the public, the boards, councils. The HR, they might have it if they're department director. So they would have that level. So I guess it's, it's not, not unreasonable or impossible what, what you're, you would hope for, Chris. But, uh, it would make recruitment a little more difficult, I would say, than if we just, you know, focus somebody with the, the planning background and, and the HR, um, you know, um, again, we haven't decided, I guess, where that would fall. I, we, I thought it was going to go more on the council level with decisions like that. And, and that was one of the things that made, I think, many of the department directors feel, um, good about the potential change that we're going to be doing, that the, uh, it would just be maybe the town manager would be, just be vested with a recommendation authority or advice, you know, you recommend to the hiring committee or whatever committee or the council as a whole, the actual discipline or whatever that may consist of.
So back to the thing about timelines, I don't, can we call a special meeting just to talk about one issue? Because when we're looking at what we've got timeline-wise, we've got one meeting in November, we're going to have all five department heads, we're going to have a lot of stuff packed into one meeting.
Yeah.
So I don't feel that that's appropriate to discuss this. We're going to have one meeting in December. So we're talking two more meetings for the whole year to do something like this. Now, we can either, if we can call it special meeting, just to discuss the town manager roles in a public forum. Um, you can do something like that, but I don't think we need to try to unpack this suitcase amongst all the other things that we've got.
No, I think, I think we're never in December.
We have to.
So I mean, if we want to push this till January and try planning on, you know, a, a special meeting for this in January where we just, basically, I'm looking at it like a workshop, we're just going to sit and talk about this one issue for an hour.
Yep. And, and if, you know, and on that topic, if you did it in that approach, um, you know, maybe you should budget, you know, in your minds, maybe it's going to take two meetings. But if, you know, where the council is kind of discussing, but you have the department heads here as well, so that you get the input and the answers as you might need them on the spot. I, I could see where maybe in two meetings, you know, that probably lasts an hour and a half.
That'd be my thoughts on time tables for the rest of the year and direction forward with this.
I would agree. I would, you know, and try to have those discussions done before spring.
There's, there's a lot of stuff I want you guys to look at too. Carol sent a, um, email back on nine twelve about all the duties that she has inherited. On nine twelve, she sent me, um, you know, as part of a spreadsheet that she, you know, that she, of all the duties, you know, that her office has inherited, okay? You know, liability, insurance, um, um, spreadsheets, uh, a building permit, uh, a spreadsheet, uh, um, um, you know, just liability, auto, property, inland marine, um, workers comp, health insurance, things that used to be, um, not necessarily clerk treasurer, uh, duties that are now on her desk. That, that used to be part of the town manager's role, okay? So that's where I'm, that's where I'm going.
We'll discuss that as well.
Yeah. Look at that spreadsheet that she, um, that she's got, that she sent on nine twelve. There's, there, it's quite lengthy.
Can I ask a clar- a clarification question to the attorney? Vicky?
Yeah.
What IC code you're referring to, thirty-six, five, five, nine? Thirty-six dash five dash five dash nine for the town marshal versus town manager position?
Eight is the duty for the town manager.
Right, but with the, with the hiring and firing authorities, thirty-six, five, five, nine.
As far as including the town marshal?
Yeah, and the, uh, employees under the town marshal. No, that's fine. I just didn't know which IC code you were referring to. You were referring to eight?
Eight is the one that has the duty.
Okay. All right. Well, I don't want to waste any time at the meeting. I'm just curious which IC code you're referring to.
So are we, um, all on the same page that we're going to just kind of look at things on our own in the next couple? in the next couple of months, and then the first of the year, we'll get some dates set for work sessions by public meetings where we...
I don't imagine much of the public's gonna come through.
Well, we have to offer it up.
Right, I'm just saying.
And make sure it's on the public's page.
Right, well, it'll still be televised.
And give, you know, Kurt a chance to heal and get the holidays over with and...
Carol, I would like you to print that email spreadsheet for me, if you don't mind, does anybody else want that printed?
The one I sent.
From the nine, from nine twelve. And Steve, I think I need your final draft, this, this is all the stuff I've been working with lately, and I don't see it in there.
Oh, okay. Just, you know, it's dated ten dash twenty.
Ten twenty?
Yeah, and I'll... If you want, you can have my copy right now, Vicki.
No, that's fine, I'll just get them both in my, does anybody else want them printed so they can be looking over them the next couple of months?
I would like to have it, I don't have it.
Yeah.
And do you want it in your box, or would you want my copy now, Darryl?
Well, no, sir, you can put them in your box, I'll just stop up here.
Darryl, Vicki, anybody else want a hard copy?
I'll print one. So, in the next, so we're all in agreement, in the next couple of months, we're gonna look over things, jot ideas that you have down, first of the year, we'll get on the calendar. Cause really, the December meeting, if we're gonna have all five department heads, which I think is the fair way to do it, but we have not always done it that way.
That, that's the November meeting.
Well, then in December, we have the same thing, until the second.
Work that out.
If we're only meeting once in a month, then we're gonna come into it, and it's gonna be a long one.
Do you, do you want all on both?
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
Whatever, in December, okay.
Only one, only one meeting, but we just know they'll, they'll probably be lengthy. So, they might as well all find out.
Right, we'll just all find out.
Okay. I think we'd have some direction on where we're gonna go with that. So, item number seven is to review recommendations from the Public Works Committee on the appraisals that we'll receive for the one ten South Orange Street building, and discussion on what our next steps will be. You guys had a Public Works Committee meeting yesterday?
Yeah.
Who wants to report?
Yes, we did, we reviewed the two appraisals, and one was for one fifty, and one was for one forty, so the average of the two appraisals is one forty-five. The committee was not unanimous, but our recommendation is to try to sell the building at one forty-five. So, that is our recommendation to the council. At least try to sell the building at one forty-five.
Back up a point, that's not successful.
And then, if that is unsuccessful, we thought we should at least try that, or we didn't come up with a set period of time. But, we don't think there's any other option, we can't go lower than the average of the two appraisals, am I correct in my thinking?
You can to sell, you can't to buy. Can't buy something for more than the average of two appraisals, but you can sell it for less.
Okay, and...
You can sell it for less than the average of the two?
Yes, but you, you as a council, the town could not buy the building or more. Well, I mean, I'm just saying, if you were gonna make a purchase, you have to get two appraisals in that situation also, and you can't pay more than the average of two appraisals. But to sell, you can sell it for less than the average, you just have to come up with a minimum bid. And I can, I can dive into the process for selling it, if you want me to do now.
Absolutely, in light of...
Happy to question before we go down that. Why did we need to get two appraisals?
You have to have the two appraisals so you have something to base your minimum on.
Gotcha.
It doesn't have to dictate it, but you have something to base it on. Rather than, you know, everybody guessing that it's worth fifty thousand, you sell it for thirty thousand, and find out that it's worth a lot more. It is still required.
Okay, how can we sell it for less?
What do you mean?
Cause that was not my understanding of what Kurt said.
When you're buying...
No, we're selling.
Well, when you're selling, I'm pretty sure you can sell it for less than the average of the two appraisals.
Okay, how? How, 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 how?
Well, they can't make you keep something you don't want, can they?
Well, and as far as disposing of the property, when you go through the process, so at this point, you guys have received proposals other than selling it, right?
We, we have interest, we actually don't have anything in writing yet.
Nothing that was...
Well, we did have two written proposals, right, but they weren't very specific, they were...
Well, we, we don't have dollar, dollar signs yet, we have interests.
So, if you were gonna proceed with selling the real estate, my recommendation would be to, tonight, if you wanna do it tonight, reject all proposals received so far, and then the town council president would need to appoint a board, probably the town council, to schedule a, a public hearing, we have to have a public hearing on this matter, okay? And so, if you appoint the town council to be that board, then the town council would schedule a public hearing and hold down the proposal to sell this piece of real estate. After the hearing, if the town council would make a recommendation to the town council president to sell the real estate, then at that point, the town council president would authorize the... You sell three ways, you can do an online auction, a live auction, or traditional bidding. You have to set a minimum bid, just like you would on anything else, and... You have published, notice of the public hearing at least ten days prior to the day of the public hearing. If you're gonna do it for November twenty, November twenty-fifth, the November meeting, I don't think you guys are loaded on those days, but if you're gonna do it November twenty-fifth, then you wanna make sure that it's published in the paper, both newspapers, Alvin and Deuce, one time prior to November fifteenth. Have it down as ten days in advance.
So, it has to be filled out, filled out for sale, like you and I, we buy it off.
Bid is the preferred method, yeah, either, either auction, online or in person, or traditional bidding. You set a minimum bid, and reserve the right to reject any and all bids received. If I'm wrong about the average, I will correct myself with an email to the town council, seeing for it, also.
Are the appraisals, as of this meeting, of knowledge?
They'd be a public document.
We paid for them, they're back. One was seventy-eight pages, and the other one was fifty-something.
They included though, the section that was forwarded, so that was thirty-nine.
And the qualifications, one was a little...
Yeah.
I saw at least one of them made the assumption that the parcel could be divided into two, have a separate second building built on the parcel that had the parking lot.
But that...
No, the parking lot wasn't included. The parking lot wasn't included. We had to get the one guy to redo the, we had to get the guy to redo, because he included the parking lot on his appraisal, and it only includes one little tiny strip in the back. Cause he went off the beacon, and that...
Isn't included.
That is not included.
It's just a smaller parcel of the building?
It's just the building, one little tiny strip in the back.
And on the side.
And one little strip on the side, the parking lot is not included.
Virtually the width of the, the length of the handicap ramp going down.
Yes. Which is about what, fifteen deep?
I, I forget.
The town would not, there's not a sense of selling parking lot with it?
No.
We don't have parking spaces behind it.
And graphically, you can picture, it's like an L-shaped parking lot that we're retaining around the whole building.
We're, we're keeping the public parking lot.
Well, I hate to ask, but do you guys want this to come back to the Public Works Committee again?
No.
Okay.
We want to try to sell the building, that's the recommendation of the committee.
And is the intent, originally when we did the RFP, we were trying to control some of the scenarios so that the, the building would be preserved. Is the intent, if we would go this route of just putting it up for sale and rejecting the RFP, that they, if the person purchased it, they could do whatever they wanted with it?
You know, that's a rush group, isn't it?
Well, Zayn, the, the, there was only four of us here, it was me, Terry, Cory, and Zayn. So, we didn't know this information that Matt just gave us, okay? We thought we had to have the one forty-five. So, this is news to me and Zayn at this point, okay? So, this is all new to us, we did not know this. So, we didn't know this information.
Well, right, but I'm asking, because we did have the other proposal, you called him Matt, it's Tony.
I'm sorry, no, no.
I've been called worse.
I just pulled Zayn's out of this. Okay, maybe we have to take this back to the Public Works now, because me and Zayn were completely under... I mean, were, were we not saying that we had to have one forty-five out of this building?
If, if I may, Matt, Matt just showed me something, thirty-six, nine, thirty-seven, twenty-six. The IC code, but it's stating something, I don't know if you wanna look at it, Matt.
What, what are you, what are you reading there, man?
What do you think it says?
It says after appraisal, or may sell, may sell the property interest for not less than the full appraised value of the property interest.
The, the average of it, I think it says.
It doesn't say average.
That's what Kurt said the last time, but I don't know.
Then I will trust Kurt on that.
And not who?
Is that not what Kurt said?
That's what I thought he said.
Okay, so, we're under the impression that we have to have one forty-five, we have to try to sell this building at one forty-five.
But, we got a bidding process, we know what the average is, if you set a minimum. Whatever the bidding process is at the time, that's what the builder goes for. We'll, unless you wanna set the minimum of one forty-five.
I'm sure he said we cannot ask anything less than the average of the two, one forty-five.
We, we need to get that question answered before we...
Don't rely on the newspaper guy, please.
I'll get you an answer. Terry Matt? Terry Matt will get a response.
We are, dude. Our, our, that's our recommendation. And how, if, if that is our recommendation, how long would you want to do that for until you gave that up? Because I don't see that happening. I don't see anybody giving us one forty-five.
There's a lot of work.
Not any into it.
But I also see Zayn's idea of a pavilion with bathrooms and things of that nature.
I'm not even saying it needs to be a bathroom, but my, my whole thought process on this, all along, is to do something for the community. That, that is, and whatever that may be, and I know that we've got some financial adjustments on the horizon with SB one, but I still think it would be great for the community if we could have, you know, an Africanese pavilion, it's really awesome. And I would love to say, let's go for it, let's do bathrooms, let's do, we can have farmer markets there on Saturday, we can move pork burger sales from the courthouse down to there, chicken, and you have a parking lot. Heck, maybe even, we put a live band up there or something, like, I don't know. That's been my vision, not to just sell it, I don't feel that municipalities are in the business of selling property. It's hard for us to acquire property, and especially downtown, on State Road nine, with such visibility that that has. So, I was the lone person that said, no, I don't wanna sell it from the Public Works Committee. I'm gonna stay on that horse and ride it and go whichever direction this goes, so, that, that's just how I feel. I feel that we get more people to come into town, more businesses can have patrons come in, they stop at the coffee shop, they can get a bite to eat, whatever, I just like that idea.
I like it too, other than the price.
And I'm not saying we need to do it right now, but I'm, but right now, what we're deciding is whether or not we're gonna keep this or we're gonna get rid of it. I would rather keep it and go that route in the future, so...
How much work would it be, I know it's not good for a building to sit empty, but how much work would it be to, like, winterize it? So that we didn't have to pay utility and stuff?
That I don't know, I mean...
Have we ever winterized it?
Well, there's been people in it.
Okay.
So, I mean...
So, it's never set empty?
I know, but I'm saying winter's coming on.
Yeah, that's why I know.
So, I mean, you always have a service connection fee from the power company, and you'll always have that from NIPSCO.
But right now, we have to do something right now. Somebody needs to go drain the water lines now. So, which department's gonna do that?
Hope the water department, but I'm just...
I'm not for it.
Okay, so...
I'll take the truck out.
Zayn, let's delegate that now.
Okay. Steve, can you talk with Terry or Aaron C. about granting the water lines in that building, so that we're not filling up the basement again?
Let's talk about shutting the water off and draining the line.
And, but yet, keeping it minimally heated, presumably. I would assume you'd have to, around fifty degrees. It's usually winterization.
Putting antifreeze in the toilets?
I, I think regardless of whether, you know, it sells or it doesn't, those are steps you need to take right now.
Talk to Cory and Terry and have them tag team that, or whoever's going to do that.
Right, okay, I'll ask one.
Get them, get, get one of them to commit.
Okay. Are we done on that topic?
Okay, no, we're not. So, are, are we gonna, what are we gonna do, we're not done? Are we gonna offer it for sale?
When we got, when we had two people of interest, can they be contacted, or do you have to open a backup? You have to open a backup.
I didn't see the RFP, so I'm not sure. I'm not sure what, what procedure you guys followed, too, to get those proposals?
I didn't have the price on the proposals.
Yeah, the, the one was a conglomerate of different organizations, I think they were to donate the building to them, and then they would do the renovations, and then the other one was, when you get the proposals, we might be interested. I mean, it was very vague, there was no, there was no bid or anything.
Well, and the town wrote the, the RFP, Request for Proposal, in, in, in large measure with Kurt's advice, where we would not be, we didn't have to make an award, yeah, not binding. So, I didn't, I didn't think, I don't even think, maybe wrong, I don't remember that we even had to say, we reject every proposal, nothing from what I know.
You probably don't have to, I just thought good practice to, if you're moving on, if you know you're moving on, reject everything you receive at that point.
I see, let's wait, okay.
What, what about creating a committee that, or, or maybe the Public Works Committee needs to do this, but it's probably gonna be more like work than what maybe that specific committee wants to do, but knowing that there are grant opportunities out there because of the... But knowing that there are grant opportunities out there because of the building being in the historical district and knowing that there needs to be some work done, I think if we're not going to put it up for sale, starting a committee that could start that work, that makes sense. And we'll work towards that.
The committee's recommendation is to put it up for sale.
Well, just a minute. The pavilion idea was over the parking lot or were the building actually with that?
It didn't, it didn't really specify. And just as a reminder from the survey, that was a close second to selling the bid, the building.
I mean, it was like forty-nine and fifty-one or, you know, like something pretty close.
Virtually a tie.
Yeah, it was, it was very, very close.
Okay, so the committee is making a recommendation to sell the building.
And if we sell, what, where does that money, what line item does that money go back into?
Our general fund.
I would say typically it goes into wherever it was paid out of.
Okay.
That was so long ago, I wouldn't, I have no idea. So, in those cases, it usually is back into the general fund unless, Tony, you know, otherwise.
How, how long ago was this purchased?
What was that? I saw that deed, was one of them like nineteen, I, there was some...
You have some of the deeds, yeah.
Like nineteen thirty-three or nineteen fifty-something. There was two different deeds, I see.
It's been a while.
Did you a marshal that night?
No. No way.
It seems like it, though.
Close.
Feels like it.
I'm not saying anything without my attorney.
Oh, my gosh.
Okay, in light of, I mean, okay, so you saw the building, let's say you get a hundred forty-five thousand or whatever the amount is. You know, to, to Zayn's point, it's, that's a one-time amount. It gets put into the general fund and it's, you know, long gone and forgotten. Of course, the building's off of our hands, kind of in a way, an advantage. But then it's also, there's no, you have no control over the future of that site. It's gonna be whatever business comes in, whatever, and hopefully, you know, that'll stimulate businesses, that'll come back on the tax roll. But if we were in dire financial straits, I would say the sale option, yeah, you know, maybe it leans more in that category. But in the long term, I mean, communities can do wonderful things, as, you know, Zayn has, we've all seen.
I believe the survey did not want us putting a dollar in that building. But, but, the committee also, all I'm saying is, if it doesn't sell, I will choke on Zayn's wagon.
Well, it's gonna go to auction, so it's gonna sell. We have to sell it at auction.
No, 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 no.
Oh, does it could be bids, could be online auctioning?
No, we say minimum. Is that true? Is that true? I'm telling you, you cannot go less than a hundred and forty-five thousand. Nobody's gonna give us that.
But then what about messing with the bid and putting it...
There isn't, I'm telling you. There is no online auction.
Well, unless, until we have that clarified, we're just spinning on wheels.
Right.
I'm telling you, online auction with a minimum bid.
Of a hundred and forty-five thousand. Nobody's gonna give you that.
That's right. Cause you're gonna spend money advertising a public hearing and go through the process of paying somebody to come up with all the bid documents.
We don't know that, we don't know that that's really true until we put it out there.
We don't know if, if that's true or not, but you're gonna do so.
I will, yeah, I'll get you one.
Yeah.
So, we table?
Let's just table it.
Okay, anything else?
Well, just to clarify, the, the appraisals, we've talked, I guess it's open now, we've listed the amounts.
You can give Jackie and Justin Dean the appraisals and Josh Rosenhoff, although they're public record now.
Very good, thank you.
Anything else for new business? We will move on to approval of accounts payable and payroll vouchers of October sixteenth and October twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five.
I move we approve those payable and payroll vouchers for October sixteenth and twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five.
I will second that.
You have a motion, a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? If there's nothing more to come before the board, I would entertain a motion for approval, or excuse me, for adjournment.
I have adjourned.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Being adjourned.